The members will now resume the meeting. Please return to your seats. We're almost, well, we're almost one hour into the meeting. Like I said from the beginning, I would like you to give the legal advisor a chance to explain. For all your questions or disagreements, you can raise that to the legal advisor. Let me reiterate. As lawmaker, you have no right to interrupt the meeting. You are depriving the public right to know. And it wouldn't allow a meeting to let a legal advisor deprive of the opportunity to explain. The public were not able to grasp the contents. If you're dissatisfied with my decision, I know that you can pursue it through other channels, which include the legal channels. I have been prudent in making such decisions, but let me remind you once again. You had the right to disagree. You don't have the right to interrupt the meeting because you're depriving the public the opportunity to get to the bottom of facts. Mr. Chu Kachin, first warning. First warning. Ms. Wu Chi Wei, first warning. Mr. Lam Cheuk Ting, first warning. Mr. Roy Kwong, first warning. I'm very much reluctant of taking away the members' chance to speak. I've been waiting for an hour. And like, I did, and I pleaded you about five times in allowing to me to continue. You can pursue it the matter through other channels, but I must point out that you don't have the right in interrupting the meeting. As the chair incumbent chairman, I'd ensure the smooth conduct of the meeting. And Dr. Fernando Chang, first warning. Mr. Wu Chi Wei, second warning. Mr. Wu Chi Wei. Mr. Chu Kachin. Lam Cheuk Ting. Fernando Chang. Roy Kwong. As the chairman, I'm very reluctant to ask members leaving this chamber. Please return to your seat right away. Please return to your seats. Mr. Dennis Quoc. You had no right to use a loudspeaker at the meeting room. You have also left your seat. But the security guards please take away Mr. Quoc's loudspeaker. Members, please return to your seats. Members, please return to your seats. Let me illustrate what's happening in the House committee. According to the ROP and the House rules, I am the incumbent chairperson. Does I have the power to set the agenda and set the meeting date? Which I has been doing all this time. As the House committee meetings has failed to elect a new chairman despite seven months of meeting. As incumbent chairman, according to ROP and the House rules, have the right to call and convene a meeting to resolve this. And that's also a duty of the chairperson. Members may have the right to disagree with me, but let me reiterate. You had no right to interrupt the meeting. Your interruption deprived the public the chance to grasp the facts. And the legal advisor cannot explain her position. That's deprived the public right to know. My appeal to the members returning to your seats. I already exercised maximum tolerance. It's happened an hour. I know that our security guards are doing a very tough job. Please avoid any bodily confrontation, physical confrontation. Please avoid physical confrontation. I will hope the meeting to start. I'll be waiting for an hour. Other members have been waiting in their seats while the public is watching the live webcast. I hope that you can give the legal advisor a chance to state her legal position. What I'm right is a legal perspective. You want to allow the meeting to be conducted. The legal advisor were not able to expand her legal view opinion. The public wouldn't able to know what's really going on. As the chairperson, I must ensure the order of the meeting is reasonable and allow the participants and the public to get to the bottom of things. Please return to your seat as soon as possible so the meeting can start. Please return the meeting, return to your seat for the meeting to start.
If you continue to shout around the chairman's bench, it will be difficult for us to proceed. Legal advisor. Would you like to elaborate on the legal points? Well, members are not able to listen to the proceeding of the meeting if you go on others. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can members hear the legal advisor? Can you hear me? Yes, I tried to ask the legal advisor to give us a brief introduction about the legal points. Yes, my own. Let me speak. Regarding the election of the House committee chairman, I would like to make three points in my response. Under normal circumstances, the election of the chairman will be the first item for the committee in the first session. In October, the secretaries issued a paper. And this was set out clearly. For this point, well, in fact, for the outside counsel engaged by the president, they also agree with this point. And the second point is that during the election of the House committee chairman, I would like to talk about the powers of the incumbent chairman. For the October meeting, it was said that the purpose was to elect a new chairman. The new chairman would then set the agenda for the new session. And therefore, at that time, the secretaries were saying that under normal circumstances, during the election of the House committee chairman, it is not expected that incumbent House committee chairman will exercise the powers of a chairman. Please take a look of paragraph five of annex one to paper LS sixty-seven. Well, we have also considered the issue as to whether the election will be fair. Well, for the outside counsel's view as engaged by the president, it is believed that before the election of a new chairman, the incumbent chairman is still in office. And therefore, she should be cautious and prudent in considering whether she would exercise her powers. To quote from the joint advice, I believe that the incumbent chairman has cautiously considered the matter as well as the concerns as to whether the meeting is being conducted fairly. I believe that she will not exercise her powers during the election of the chairman. So the October paper as well as the joint advice may, maybe worded differently, but then they have the same position. I was referring to the ordinary times. Now come to my third point, that is the current situation. For six months, we have failed to elect a chairman. Obviously, this is not the normal case. And then it was not anticipated by the October paper at the time of drafting. Normally, we have got only one scenario, which is the normal case. For the exceptional cases, there are numerous of them. Therefore, we can only talk about the ordinary scenarios. We would not have been able to anticipate that the delay would have been that long. The delay is a new problem. We need to resolve the new, the problem instead of going back. Well, for the delay in the election for the House committee chairman, it is a new problem. We need to resolve the problem itself. Instead of going back to negate the normal interpretation and application of the rules of procedures. This is not necessary. Now, we have a delay in the election of the chairman, and there has been a backlog of issues and workload. That's the problem we need to resolve. Just like rule thirty-seven A of the rules of procedures. At first, the interpretation was that members might move more than one motion. But then it was not expected that members would propose thousands of thirty-seven A motions. There were many of such. And then the F C chairman was of the view that it would prevent the committee from working normally. So it's not a matter of backtracking on the interpretation. Now, we have got undue disruption, undue delay. So we believe that we need to carry out the duty as the secretariat to resolve the problem. In the October paper, we said that the chairman, the chairman's duty was to elect the chairman. And then the chairman may deal with issues related to the election. And in fact, the incumbent H C chairman on a number of occasions came forward to resolve problems related to the election of chairman. Like when to call a meeting to elect a chairman. So to resolve the problem, the chair set a date for the election of the chairman. Meetings were called and the meeting failed to elect a chairman. That's a separate issue. That's another problem. And then the incumbent chairman set another date to elect a chairman. Dr. Helena Wong, you must leave the conference room immediately. You can't charge at the chair's bench. I've been most tolerant with you. A moment, please. Legal advisor, legal advisor. A moment, please, members. I would like to remind you once again. The legal advisor is still hoping to explain the matter to the public, even though the circumstances are difficult. So for those who would like to speak, please press the button request to speak. If you continue to heckle and then we cannot continue with the meeting, I won't have a choice and have to exercise my powers as a chairman. I would like to give you the final opportunity. For those who are around the bench, please return to your seat. You may ask questions, you may challenge my powers, but you don't have the power to prevent the meeting from going on. Please return to your seat. Honorable Wu Chi Wei, keep calm, please. Don't make life difficult for the security guards. I just want to remind members that I do hope to let you ask questions. Please return to your seat and press the request to speak button. I've been most tolerant as the chairperson. If you have questions, you may ask them. But it is not right for you to obstruct the meeting. In this way, the public are not able to listen to the views of other members and not the legal advisor's viewpoint. It means that the public's right to know is being denied. Wu Chi Wei, Lam Cheuk Ting, Roy Kwong, are you going to return to your seat? Members, please stop. Please stop yelling from your seat. I have to deal with the members who are in front of the bench because they are indeed obstructing the proceeding. Let me remind members once again. According to section seventeen C of the Electoral Powers and Privileges Ordinance, if anybody creates or join in any disturbance which interrupts or is likely to interrupt the proceedings of a council or committee while the council or such committee is sitting, it is an offense. In accordance with section nineteen B of the Electoral Powers and Privileges Ordinance, any person who assaults, interferes with, molests, receives, or obstructs any officer of the council while the, in the execution of his duty, this person commits an offense. I don't want any member committing any offense. So I'll invite you to return to your seat and put questions to the legal advisor. Legal advisor. The circumstances are difficult. Are you able to continue? I'll try. Thank you. Well, members' concerns are as follows. That is whether the incumbent chair necessarily have the, has the power to convene this meeting. Now, if the incumbent chair is of the view that the convening of today's meeting is to deal with the delay in the election, the secretariat believes that in this way we can solve the problem. While the incumbent chair has time again come out to try to solve the problems with the election of the chairman. I cited a number of examples. That is when we can elect a chair is an issue that we need to deal with. So the incumbent chair sets dates for the election of the chairman. We failed to elect a chair, so she set another date for the election meeting. And then another example of that one is that during the electoral process, the House committee cannot call meetings to consider subsidiary legislation. The incumbent chair on many occasions directed the secretariat to issue reports to members. In other words, you can see that on many occasions, the chair has already tried to resolve the problems while there has been a delay in the election of the chairman, and members didn't quaver that. For the details, please go to paragraph six of annex one to LS sixty-seven. The longer it is dragged, yeah, being dragged on, the more issues we have got. So if the incumbent chair thinks that there is a current issue which is also related to the election of the chairman, if she thinks that she convenes a meeting today so as to solve the problem, then it is, the secretariat believes that it is an appropriate move. As to how and when to solve the problem, it is up to the incumbent chair to make a judgment. In other words, if the incumbent chair believes that we can solve a problem by convening the meeting, then the secretariat agrees with that. Members may think that for the incumbent chair to take such an approach, it may not be a desirable one. But then if she believes that we should solve the problem within the parameters of House committee, the secretariat is of the view that this is an acceptable option. If I may have a conclusion. For the October paper, the secretariat is about the ordering course of events. Election of the chairman is the first item of the House committee. Well, under normal circumstances, we do not expect the chairman to exercise the powers. But then if there are problems with the election of the chairman, the incumbent chairman has the duty to seek solutions. And in fact, she has been doing this all the time. The secretariat referred to the interpretation and application of the rules of procedures. The secretariat considers three principles. First of all, the importance of election of a chairmanship. Second, the fairness of the election of the chairman. The third is that the rules of procedures are there to facilitate the operation of the council. So when it comes to the interpretation, it cannot be construed in such a way that the council will be paralyzed. For the incumbent chair as well as the presiding member, irrespective who they are, the secretariat will apply the same principles. That's all I want to say. Well, the legal advisor has briefly told us what her viewpoints are like. So if we'd like to ask her questions, please, please press the request to speak button. Honorable Wu Chi Wei. Honorable Wu Chi Wei, I have given you numerous reminders. Mr. Charles Mark, please speak.
I speak. Not that I give recognition to this meeting. Well, I would like, since you give me the floor, I would say that we need to give the floor to Mr. Dennis Quoc. He should be allowed to preside this meeting. So let Dennis Quoc, the presiding member, to speak. I don't accept that this is a proper meeting. It is being sort of convened unlawfully. So the solution is that you need to come down from your seat. You need to withdraw your candidacy. Well, the so-called legal advisor is a political advisor. All that you have been saying has got no legal basis. So you're going back on your words. In the past, you were better. Now, I think you have shown disrespect to your legal background, your legal professionalism. I'd like to ask Mr. Dennis Quoc, the proper presiding member to chair the meeting. Please give Dennis Quoc the floor. Please switch on his mic so that he can speak. Starily, for members that you have sent out, you haven't got the power. You are not qualified to send them out. You have to let them come back. You have to apologize to Andrew Wen. And then for the jostling for the pro-establishment camp members who did so, they are here shouting and yelling. It's outrageous. We are here not to take up any points with you, not the legal points with you because you haven't got the power to chair the meeting. So please don't mislead us. You are saying that we deny others the chance to listen to the legal advisor. But the fact is that this hasn't been a meeting to be properly convened. You want to talk about legal points? You can go to have a stand-up briefing. You can ask the legal advisor to go to the microphone stand to say whatever she likes. If you allow this to happen, it means that we are not observing this rate of law. It is, it has become lawless. So you alone can solve the problem. You just withdraw your candidacy. You want to have it your way. You want to be the House committee chairman. You want to become the president. Who are you? Uh, do you have any sense of shame? You want everybody to to prepare your future path. You have made very serious allegations against me. I must reply in accordance with the rules of and procedures of the power to convene the meeting. If you think I haven't got the power, you can challenge me. I have this understanding. I'm ready for that. But it can't be that you think that I haven't got the power and so I refrain from solving the problem. Both the R P and H R are clear. I'm still the chairman in office until a new chairman has been elected. The easiest way is that Dennis Quoc and you allow the election to take place immediately. I also said that had we been able to elect a chairman this morning, then this meeting would be convened and chaired by the new chairman. And it may, it doesn't have to be me. And it may not be me.
Mr. Dennis Quoc, let me make a solemn announcement once more that you have no power to preside at this meeting. It is in contravention of the rules of procedure and the House rules. That's the first. Secondly, at three o'clock, I have issued a number of warnings against you, telling you not to preside at the meeting because you have no such power. And I have also ordered you to leave the conference room immediately. My warning has been completely ignored by security guards. I want that on the record. I also want this on the record that you have kicked out Mr. Ted Ho, Mr. Elvin Young Jeremy Ten, Raymond Wong, Helena Wong, as well as Andrew Wen. They should be invited back into the conference room to attend the meeting. Fourthly, I witnessed Mr. Ko Kwekung dragging Mr. Ray Chen on the floor. This is disorderly conduct, and I ordered Mr. Ko Kwekung to leave the conference room immediately. Starily, what kind of meeting do you call this? Is this a meeting? You think you can preside at this meeting? You don't know shame. You have to follow the rules of procedure. Then you can convene the meeting. But if you don't? And if you steamroll it? Just like, just like what happened with the extradition bill? Have you learned any lesson at all? You just forced your way through. Michael, Mr. Michael Look, I order you to leave the conference room immediately because you have no power to shout from your seat when I'm speaking. You don't know how to convene a meeting, Ms. Starily? Your time is up. Let me remind you, Mr. Dennis Quoc, that I call this meeting. I have the right and the power to preside at this meeting, not you. You have no power to evict any members, Mr. Roy Kwong. Mr. Roy Kwong, if you're not going to speak, I ask Ms. Priscilla Leng to do so. Under seventy-five bracket two of the rules of procedure, you will find that it is stated very clearly. The incumbent chairperson's term is till the start of the next session. It doesn't say that aside from election of members, the incumbent chairperson does not have the power to transact business. Mr. Dennis Quoc doesn't have the power to preside at the meeting. This affects the appointment of the new chief justice as well as a number of bills and the passage of the National Anthem Bill. This is childish. And it has been on full display for everyone. This is childish and it has been on full display for everyone to see. For Hong Kong's prosperity and stability and to get out of this impasse, Chairperson, you have to strictly enforce the rules of procedure. We have burnt our bridges. This is our way to move forward. We need to resume normal business. The House Committee has been ground to a halt. We have failed the public. I think the two senior councils, Mister Benjamin Yu and Mister Jenkins Yun, as well as Mister, Miss Pauline Ng, and another um dignitary, they are all very familiar with the rules of procedure. Maybe give them a maximum of fifteen minutes to waste their time afterwards. Chairperson, you will have to do your duty to transact business as we should. I support you, Chairperson, to continue to preside at the meeting because only you have the power and the right to implement the rules of procedure. Just ignore the others. Mister Kenneth Leng, let me clarify that this is an illegitimate and unlawful meeting. Of course, you can call a meeting and set the agenda, but the agenda should be the election of a chairman. I don't know why that since October, the legal advisor has changed her views completely. Has she been under any pressure? She talked about the free principles and the extraordinary time. You won't find that in the rules of procedure. Is there other problems with your professionalism or your independence? This is a political issue. It won't be possible to resolve it with the rules of procedure. Do you recall, Miss Starry Lee, that your mentor, Mister Jasper Tung, called a meeting? It's, it was an unofficial meeting. You can call this a special meeting. This is a, this is a big problem. I want to resolve the problem, but if you use the wrong method to resolve the problem, people will be unhappy. This special meeting should not be called. You can call an unofficial meeting. Do you remember Jasper Tung calling a meeting in the chamber? We all participated. You have chosen the wrong uh venue. Mister Charles Mark, please don't interrupt. You have chosen a completely wrong way to resolve the problem. This is not the way. How come that the secretariat and the legal advisor can change their version, saying that this is an extraordinary, extraordinary time? Well, would they say that it will be an emergency in a few weeks' time? Legal advisor, did you not give us a genuine legal uh piece of legal advice in October? Let's hear from the legal advisor. Is this an unlawful meeting? In October, the secretariat issued a report expecting that the election of chairperson will be completed within one month as usual. In the construction of provisions, we will do so against a a normal background. There can only be one normal situation, an unlimited abnormalities. We cannot cater for all the uh limitless abnormalities. We have to resolve this new problem. We should not go back to change the normal construction or interpretation of the provision. Let me give you an example. Thirty-seven A of the Finance Committee Procedure. The normal construction of the of that rule is to allow members to move more than one thirty-seven A motion. Please listen to me. The normal construction is that one is allowed to move more than one motion, but one does not expect that one member would move thousands of thirty-seven A motions. If there is an emergence of a significant number of thirty-seven A motions is a problem, which in turn impede the operation of the Finance Committee. As a result, the chairperson of the Finance Committee found a way to resolve the situ, the problem. Now, with the House Committee, it's been six months and our chairperson is still not returned. This is not normal. Back in October, the secretariat did not foresee such a situation. Now that we have the emergence of a new situation, we have to resolve this problem. It's not the case that we change our interpretation back in October. We have to tackle the the situation. Whose responsibility is it? The secretariat's view is that it is the duty of the incumbent chairperson, Miss Starry Lee. And Miss Starry Lee has been dealing with issues relating to elections. The functions and duties of Miss Starry Lee is related to the election of a chairperson. It's mentioned in my opinion in October. That is, to deal with election of chairperson-related issues, as I've said. Well, it, the uh calling of a meeting, the setting of a date. If a meeting is convened and a chairperson is not returned, then there is a problem. And Miss Starry Lee set a date for the next meeting. If a meeting cannot be convened in time to uh deal with bills with a time limit, Miss Starry Lee has given numerous instructions for the report to be given to members. She has been uh deep resolving a number of problems when no one raised any question. Now, as time is dragging on, then there are more more problems. If you think that the chairperson is to, is to call this meeting to resolve the problem of the failure to return a chairperson, the secretariat's view is that that it, that can be done. And as to when it should be resolved and how, it is for the incumbent chairperson to decide. Please remain calm. Please return to your seats. If you have any questions, please go back to your seat and press the request to speak button. Otherwise, you are impeding the conduct of the meeting and you have also affected other members' right to ask questions. Mister Porter, it is regrettable, regrettable that twice in a year members of the public have to see what's going on and another member has been injured. It is beyond dispute that you are still the incumbent chairperson until a new chairperson is returned. The deputy chairperson can only uh preside at the election of the chairperson, but it's been so long and we still have not returned a chairperson. Well, under seventy-five bracket eighteen, we're subject to the rules of procedure, the practice and procedure of the committee and its subcommittee shall be determined by the committee. This is uh an extraordinarily, extraordinary time and this is an unprecedented difficulty that we face. We should not decide, it is not for us to decide which uh legal, which piece of legal advice is more tenable un- until and unless we go to the Court of Final Appeal. It boils down to this. You are the incumbent chairperson. Under eighteen, eh, it is stated that members are to decide. There is no need for us to decide or choose over the two pieces of legal advice, legal advice, or to comment on the legal advice of the legal advisor. What we need to decide is who has the residual power to maintain the uh effective operation of the meeting. I think that it is not for us to decide who has committed alky virus. The opposition a minute ago or a day ago accepted the views of the legal advisor. They should not try to cherry pick and discard what they don't like. They have made it personal. They have resorted to personal attack against our legal advisor. This should be a rational discussion. Thank you, Mister Po, Mister Jay. Mister Michael Lok, we can all see that Mister Wu Chih Wai and Mister Kwak Aki are still using force to storm the chairperson's bench. Just now, a question was asked. What is abnormal? This is abnormal. Only abnormal people will say that it is normal for the House Committee to not return uh chairperson. We have um the National Anthem Bill, we have um protection against, against discrimination on the grounds of breastfeeding. The opposition stand on the opposite side of life, people's livelihood. They sta, they stand on the opposite side of the fight against developers' hegemony. You can all see. They are the henchmen of developers' hegemony. I have pressed the right button, Kwak Aki, right? I have pressed the button, your button, right, Mister Roy Kwong? Because I have, I have reviewed your true colors, that you are unscrupulous, that you are shameless, that you oppose to anything that is good for people's livelihood. You stand on the side of developers' hegemony. I'm talking about the disgraceful opposition camp. I'd like to ask about some legal advice. I heard that the chairperson has the right to resolve problems relating to the delay of the re-election of a chairperson. And I also heard that the opposition has distorted the uh advice of the legal advisor and the advice of outside counsel. I do think that um the advice by the two outside councils as well as our legal advisor are actually consistent. Mister Wu Chih Wai, I have reminded you repeatedly. Still, you charge at security guards. Are you going to stop speaking? Mister Wu Chih Wai, please leave the conference room immediately. Ms Lam Chee Ting, I have warned you repeatedly. Please stop speaking. Let me remind members again, and I ask members to return to their seats. If you're shouting in front of the chairperson's bench, it will be difficult for us to conduct the meeting. Mister Shuka Chun and Mister Lam Chee Ting, are you willing to return to your seats? Please return to your seats. Please don't make it difficult for security guards. Please return to your seats. Please return to your seats immediately. Let me give you a final warning, Mister Lam Chee Ting. Please return to your seat. Mister Lam Chee Ting, please leave the conference room. Let me remind members again. Please return to your seats so that the meeting can continue. Otherwise, as the chairperson, I have the responsibility to maintain order of the meeting and stop anyone from hindering the conduct of the meeting, Mister Holden Chow. For those watching the television now, they can, they can clearly see how ugly the um If We Burn, You Burn With Us camp is. They are not just impeding the conduct of the meeting. Individual members try to assault some of our fellow members. Chairperson, you will have to strictly enforce the rules of procedure. Those who behave in a disorderly manner, actions should be taken. And their deeds should not be condoned. When someone's banging at the door, I don't know what is happening. Chairperson, you have the power and the duty to start the meeting. The House Committee has been dragging on for half a year by Mister Dennis Quoc. Mister Benjamin Yu's legal advice has stated it very clearly. Mister Dennis Quoc used very frivolous reasons to uh drag the meeting on. This is a serious abuse of power. If you allow him to drag the election of chairperson on, you will, then there will be no end to this. You have the power and the duty to call and conduct the House Committee meeting. Dennis Quoc and his colleagues throw accusations at you, saying that you are hogging the seat. I think it's distorted allegations. You have the power and the duty to convene the House Committee meeting. Please stop any um acts that abuse power. We can see once again the disorderly conduct of Dennis Quoc. He has not performed his duty as a legislator. He has hindered the legal's um duty and function. He has to face legal consequences, and I'd like to say it again. In the scuffle, in the fast, members like Ho Chi Feng, Ted Ho, sorry, your time is up.
Doctor Lewis Quoc, they're really noisy and acting barbaric. Can you get rid of those people in front of the podium so we can continue with the meeting? Well, uh they are drowning out the voice of the legal advisor. They are seriously harassing the colleagues who are sitting for the meeting and depriving the public right to listen into the meeting and this, and also listen to deliberations. Please access your power and to um and remove them from this chamber. Please continue. Okay, I shall keep this in view. Well, now that there are people hitting on the door, what they're putting on a show today. They're simply vandalizing our chamber. They, their purpose is that they don't want the National Anthem Bill to pass. That's a clear breach of their own. The National Anthem Bill is part of the basic law. We had a constitutional duty to legislate in Hong Kong. Anyone attempting to deploy any tactic to obstruct the election of the House Com Chairman so as to uh avoid ratifying the National Anthem Bill is already improve each of their, all their unfit to serve. to serve as the legislators for Hong Kong. Chairperson, you have perfectly entitled to continue to sit as the incumbent chair. The legal advisor had made it quite clear. Now, it are extraordinary times as they felt elected chairman after seventeen seatings. And Dennis Quoc as irresponsible and an abuse his powers. They have not able to elect a chairman. And we, Hong Kong had wasted six months. And so that we have like a good luck unless a lot of the legislations and livelihood-related legislation cannot proceed. What they don't feel like then and uh freely faulting the legal advisor. Please continue to host the meeting. Ms. Claudia Ma.
Ah, a vicious Beijing little worm who thinks you've been assigned to be the next top puppet, correct? Now, I will give my time to the floor. Ladies and gentlemen, our real chair here, Dennis Quoc.
Ms. Claudia Ma, this is your slot. I didn't allow you to use it. This meeting has to be called up right away. This is not a meeting. I declare this meeting as finished. Mr. Charlie, please stop ejecting our colleagues. Mr. Dennis Quoc, please stop speaking. This is not your slot. Ms. Mo, is that your? We would like to speak, if not, I will pass on to the next one.
A little worm. And I ask you if it's correct that you think you will be the next designated puppet in Hong Kong? Reply it. Reply to me in English, please.
If you not continue, our last, the next colleague to speak, Mr. Chan Han Penn. Today, the opposition camp, in order to deprive the public right to know the truth, especially our legal advisor, is able to uh stay her position and so as to inform the public. And yet, the opposition camp chickened out. They would not want the public know uh why, what are the legal advisor on the late of the House Committee in past thus they have been disrupting this chamber for the main purpose to afraid that the public will know the truth. Just now, Mr. Dennis Quoc and claimed uh they are presented over the meeting and declared the meeting to be adjourned. These are clearly unscrupulous acts. While now that they're walking out, I hope they will never return. If, let me tell Dennis Quoc, you're asking me to save it. Let me tell you now. Well, just go, just save your breath. Stop wasting our taxpayers' money and make use of the available uh logical time for more than six months to try to do something could done in half an hour. Well, it shows how unscrupulous you are and a tremendous waste of time. So I hope that uh would the meetings chaired by you and legal advisors have elaborate. I hope that the House Committee can return to normal. So the uh the um urgent legislation camp and the委员认督council, if we don't resolve if they alter the long-term impasse that be most detrimental to the public and those squashed earth camps just stop mutually destroyed Hong Kong and this chamber. Mr. Yu Shi Wang. The the purpose of the R O P. To help that the business of the chamber can be transacted in orderly fashion. Mr. Quang, can you please stop? Can you please stop? Well, uh, somebody was talking over me. Third warning, Mr. Roy Quang. Mr. Roy Quang, please leave this chamber. Members, please return to your seats. Mr. Yu, uh, can you please start over? Can you reset the clock? Um, chair lady, the R O P is the um classes of menus experience for the orderly conduct of council business. The legal advisor back then had explained the authority of the presiding member. I see they are well founded. Martin Liu, is that point of order? Yes. I saw someone making a recording. Is that in order? Ms. Chan Hye Chan, according to R O P, can you please stop recording? Otherwise, I'll ask the secretary yet and the secretary to stop you. Can you please stop on your own initiative? Mr. Yu, please continue. It's been six months and we failed to elect a House Committee chairman. That is quite abnormal. The legal advisor just now had give a clear explanation of this normality. I have accepted the legal advisor explanation. At Article Basic Law, back seventy-three, break one and state that the duties of the member and members have power that uh suit to uh annat and repeal laws. And Dennis Quoc had abused his power, thus were without a House Committee were not able to come a new elected chairman. A lot of the legislation could not refer to the council. While for the guest House uh bill had failed to get to the council, refer to council, besides abusing his power, they are depriving the members' right to scrutinize bills. I would as don't uh uh first first chair the meetings and even after the end of this term, we're not able to scrutinize in the legislation. So all the time, an effort in preparing the agenda items that failed to refer to the council, they are much regrettable. I hope that you can stay on to chair this meeting so that our bills can referred to this council. Dr. Fen An Chang, can you please stop speaking? Mr. Horace Chang. Chairperson, what's going on with Latchco? In the past six months, the Latchco is really uh crapped at the neck and almost asphyxiated due to the abuse by Dennis Quoc. And now that the Latchco have seek advice from two outside counsel to provide a solution to resolve this so as to prevent the Latchco from being scuttled. Well, while the opposition legal opinions are paid by the opposition. Well, and claim that you have to let that hand Dennis Quoc all these powers. It's like uh uh you follow the kidnapper instructions and full escetary requests. For example, the pre-establishment camp should not take part in the chairman election. Then you will be all safe. While that's not a legal solution. That's like a bend the logic. So that if some is your route, you should just hand over all your valuables and you'll be fine. So the legal opinion from the opposition camp is unacceptable. It's a waste of time. While the performance of Mr. Quoc is no different than the Calhoun Emperor. They're ordering uh members and this and that and even eject people from the chamber. However, uh what does they have this deliberations on related to the election. They've discussed the security arrangements and also the matters following under the Latchco Commission and discussing lots of non-binding motions. Thus, I agree with the legal advice obtained by the Council President that the meeting shared by Mr. Quoc was an altruism and I hope the chairperson in this context that based on the opinion of the president to continue chair the meeting. Dr. Fen An Chang. I warned you multiple times. No warning? Dr. Chang, first warning, please stop speaking. Mr. Martin Liu. President. According to uh House Rules and the R O P, uh, your tenure of auspice is effect until the election of a new chairman of the new session. That's is beyond dispute and being explicitly provided for in the R C and the A C so that is to avoid a situation where to have a lacuna in chairmanship. Since the House Committee, we need to care a lot of legislation and other important functions. I always had the position that from the outset, you always have been the incumbent chairman and you'll be afforded the same power. And the R O P not them uh diminish the power of the incumbent chairman. Of course, you could not abuse the power to obstruct the election of the chairman and to prolong your own tenure. Otherwise, I would do be a breach of the R O P. Because the R O P has stipulated that the uh there'll be any election for the House Committee chairman. And yet, you never obstruct the election of the chairman. You have called seventeen meetings. And however, due to opposition filibustering, it all gone to waste. I am quite well versed in the legal opinion. Well, for the public right to know, I want have few questions for the legal advisor. The legal advisor claimed that uh their legal opinion claims that uh what their opinions are consistent with the secretary. Well, it doesn't matter really. May I ask the legal advisor, would you agree that um the the legal perspective and the facts as laid down in the Benjamin Yu and Jenkins Shun S C? First, do you have the right to call meetings? Second, would you have the right authority to set agenda items? And thirdly, would you have the authority to preside uh over the House Committee meetings? I hope that you, the legal advisor, explain for the public right to know. Well, let me compare my own position and those of the outside counsel. First, the election of the chairman. But the first item of business of the new session of each term. And that included expanded in the secretary document back in last November. And there's also shared with the by the outside counsel. In otherwise, the chairman election always the first item of business on the first new session. And in the proceedings for the election, on the authority of the incumbent chairman. Which are the view that, well, back in last October, I claim the purpose of the uh election is to elect a chairman for the new session to allow to set the agenda for the coming session. The secretary's position is that in the usual course of business, the incumbent and chairman will not anticipate that it would exercise the authority of the chairman. And on L S sixty-seven, an appendix one paragraph. Five, let me compare to the outside counsel. Uh, hang on. Would you like to phase the order, Mr. Liu? Well, the legal advisor had made quite clearly. Well, what consistent and not, it doesn't matter anymore, does it? Agree with the legal perspective and the fact description on the outside counsel? And you, if she'll agree. And while who have the right to a call meetings or the right to set agendas and other the right to chair meetings. You just have to answer those three questions. Legal advisor. The secretaries. Uh, you had no disagreement with the outside counsel. Maybe it's matter of wording, but position is same. So as the incumbent chairman, I have the right to call a meeting and set the agenda items and and chair the meetings. The secretary's position is that in this situation, that you failed to elect a chairman after six months and the extraordinary state of affairs. In this context, the incumbent chairperson can step out to resolve the problem. If the incumbent chairman is talking to you that uh for today's meeting to resolve an urgent matter, it will see that as a solution. The secretary would agree that uh the chairperson can step out to resolve the issues.
Honorable Quack Way King. We are finally at our committee meeting. We have someone of a right mind chairing the meeting. I'm removed. I think this should have been done a few months ago. But I understand that we need to get professional legal advice. So it's been delayed, uh but it's still better than not having it at all. Putting the legal advice aside, for those who have the burn with us mentality, they have always addressed you when they write uh to you. So Dennis Quoc has been handicapped. He can't even get correspondence from members. In other words, the burn with us group have recognized your status as the chair. Now, back to the legal advice. It is very clear. The legal advice given to the president is that it is hoped that we can discharge the duties as the legislative council. We would like to function normally. Well, for the legal advice obtained by the burn with us group, uh, I think that can be ignored. That's not a piece of legal advice. I think it is their political opinion. I think we need to distinguish the two. And I think the merits of the two, the motives of the two are different and you can tell which is better. Well, I think they have got twenty seeking nomination. And then they are forcing you to withdraw your candidacy. I think it's a matter of um vote rigging. I don't think we should buckle under pressure. We shouldn't give the chairmanship to the burn with us mentality. They would like to impeach the House Committee meetings. They would like to deny the House Committee from functioning normally. And it is not good. And so you need to make sure that justice has been done. Mr. Abraham Shaq, we have spent two hours. There's no need for us to recognize your status. I think you can simply convene the meeting and then follow the items on the agenda. Please, we're waiting for you to do this. Please not spend time on upholding your status. That has already been sort of given recognition and confirmed. Mr. Abraham Shaq, anything else? No, then Ms. Rebecca Chen. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just now, the legal advisor clearly confirmed the powers of the chair lady, Mr. Will Lee. For six months, we have an abnormal situation. That is, we failed to elect a chairman. I support Mr. Abraham Shaq. After this round of discussion, we'll urge the chair lady, Mr. Will Lee, to return to the agenda. Indeed, there are many legislative proposals for us to deal with. Just now, you allow members to speak. And then it is quite clear that some people have sort of uh threatened you, forced you to withdraw from the candidacy. According to cap five-five-four of our Hong Kong laws, if anybody is to force any candidate to withdraw from an election, then it is a matter of candidate to withdraw from an election, then it is a matter of suspected corruption. So please don't be frightened. You should continue to stand in the election. Just now, somebody claimed themselves to be democratic. But then they were trying to make use of the floor in this meeting to force you to give up your candidacy. This is shameless and this is sad. Miss Alice Mac, this is indeed a microcosm of the society. From one o'clock this afternoon up to now, you see what the society is like. And for the past six months or so, where we had this group of people, they asked others to charge forward. But then they would rather remain safe and sound in their own seat. They were uh just watching the developments like a show. Now you see what happened. Now it is so sad that Fernando Zheng is being left behind. Why don't we give him a glass of water so that he can continue to shout slowly? Did anybody capture the puzzled look of Mister Roy Quong? When the others on that side left, uh well, of course, we're not able to make a recording. But he was repuzzled because we were surprised that everybody left and he was left behind. So we have had a farce. Now let's come back to the election of the House Committee Chairman election. Just now, the opposition camp said that, seriously, all you have to do is to withdraw your candidacy. I think this is a trap. Let's tell the public what's happening. Now there are somebody could like to hijack the election of the House Committee Chairman. So that we are not able to scrutinize the bills. But in fact, on our agenda, we have this, that is, we need to endorse the uh senior judicial appointment. This is in line with our constitutional duty, that is Basic Law seventy-three bracket seven. Just now, we are not uh we are prevented from uh having our meeting. So are we being prevented from discharging our constitutional duty? Well, you can have a look of Article seventy-three and just now mentioned is made about the senior judicial appointment. This is also part of your constitutional duties. You can also refer to Article seventy-three bracket one. Just now, uh we were obstructed. So in other words, we were prevented from discharging our constitutional duties under Basic Law seventy-three. Well, it will be difficult for the Latchco to discharge uh its duties. Miss Regina Yeap. Chairman Lee, well, I have to praise you for your courage. You are faced with a bunch of um very barbaric lawmakers. The people of Hong Kong should thank you. Anybody can get legal advice. Courts are having litigations ongoing. But then Dennis Quoc has only got a piece of legal advice. That's not a court order. You can ignore him. The legal advisor has confirmed that her legal advice is the same as that given by the two outside councils. It's only a matter of a difference in the presentation. Now you have convened, you have called, you have called a meeting, you have set the agenda. Let's get a get get on with it. For the trademarks amendment bill as well as the national anthem bill, the scrutiny has been completed. We need to go back to the council as soon as possible. End of the year twenty-seventeen, the National People's Council Standing Committee has already included the national anthem law into N O three to our basic law. In twenty nineteen, Macau already introduced legislation to apply that. So we are dragging behind. And in fact, we have got two pieces of legislation that have had reports made. Uh we need to have it have the debates resumed as soon as possible. I want to know if anybody would like to speak for the first time. Please press the button to speak. After the member has spoken, I will then draw a line. Eunice Yong, Madam Chair, I can't put up with it anymore. I've been listening to this tune and it's been looped endlessly. I think, Chair, you need to exercise all the powers that you have got. It is really disturbing. He has to be sent out. We you mustn't allow such um violence to continue here. The legal advisor made it clear. Now, um outside councils have already given us legal advice. And in fact, they touch upon the powers that you have as the incumbent chairman. Now, I want to know whether we still need to hold an election. Can we really get a chairman elected? Say why? Say if we have a three-hour meeting, set aside fifteen minutes for the election. And then for the rest of the time, you will chair the meeting. Um um talk about the arrangements for the legislative proposals when the national anthem bill will go back to the full council meeting. I want to check with the legal advisor. Can we sort of have such an arrangement or must we um continue with the election of the chairman? Can we not every time just set aside fifteen minutes for the election of chairman and then for rest of the times, the really will chair the meeting? Well. Chair, sh- sh- show some mercy. Let him off. Why don't you give the floor to the legal advisor and then you continue with your song? Legal advisor. Legal advisor. Thank you, Chair. Legal advisor, please. I think I made this point a moment ago. Election of the chairman, when you have the ordinary course of events, then that should be the first item of business. Currently, what we have to consider is that whether we are still having the ordinary course of events. If it is time for us to resolve a a problem, then it is a duty of the incumbent chairman. As to how she's going to resolve the problem, it's up to her to make a decision. Thank you. Doctor Fernando Zheng. I think you are disturbing the proceeding seriously by talking, speaking. So security guards, please uh lead him back to his seat and give him a glass of water. Yes, please. Mister Chankin-Fo, thank you, Chair. The opposition camp repeatedly accused the legal advisor for backtracking. They said that they liked their first opinion given by the legal advisor. She made the point many times. Maybe it was too noisy and her voice was drowned out. I tried to tend them my understanding. Well, our convention is that we have to start with the election of the chairman. Usually, we get it done in fifteen minutes' time for twenty years or so. Well, the legal advisor said that the assumption was that the ordinary course of events would take place. He she could not have anticipated thousands of uh different scenarios. We've had nine months in a year for our business. Now, this has been tracking on for six months, so it is not an ordinary course of events. For the outside counsel, I think they are right to say that normally speaking, you need to elect the chairman first, but then there are exceptions. And when you exercise your powers, you need to be cautious. So no conflict with the L A's legal advice. I think the key point is what is meant by out of the ordinary. Now, for six months, it has been so, so it must be um quite unlike the ordinary course of events. Now, they have got their own legal advice. Yes, I've read it. My question is, how do you view their legal advice? Does it contradict your opinion and how does it compare with the views of the outside counsel? And whether the arguments stand, legal advisor. Just now, I have said that in relation to the interpretation of the R O Ps and how they are applied. We considered three principles. First of all, the importance of the election of the chairman. The R O P says that for each session, we need to elect a chairman. That's the first point. Second, the fairness of the election. What it means here is that if the incumbent chairman, right from the beginning during the election of the chairman, if she or he is to exercise his uh powers as a chairman, then it would constitute unfairness vis a vis other candidates. That's something we need to consider. Certainly, the rules of procedures are drafted to facilitate the operation of the committee. If the election of the chairman paralyzes the work of the committee. Then I don't think that's the intention. If we interpret it in such a way. Now regarding the uh alternative legal opinion obtained. I would say that probably they have given more weight to the election. They haven't tried to strike a balance. If this is allowed to go on, then we cannot move on to other business. And then the third point, the third principle that I referred to could not be upheld. Uh so that's my view on the legal advice obtained by the pandas. That is, they haven't considered that if we allow this to go on and we still fail to elect the chairman. Then the House Committee's operation will be impeded. Members of the public, security guards, please take this person away. Since we need to deal with this security issue, I would declare that the meeting is suspended for five minutes. I also hope that in the coming five minutes, everybody would cool down. Emotions are running high and I have to say that members of the public cannot obstruct our meeting. Meeting suspended.